Okay, welcome to the special meeting of the Larkspur City Council on Wednesday, March 16th, 2016, and tonight we're meeting a little later than usual at the Kreps Conference Room in Redwood High School. If you're able, we'll do the roll call first.
Councilmember Wei.
Oh, present?
I'm sorry, Mayor Wei.
Present.
Councilmember Chu.
Here.
Councilmember Hillmer.
Here.
Vice Mayor Haroff.
Here.
Councilmember Morrison.
Here.
Thank you.
And if you would like, can stand up and we'll pledge allegiance.
(inaudible)
Tonight, we have no presentations listed, so we'll move to number three, which is approval of the consent calendar. Do I have anyone from the council who'd like to pull any item from the consent calendar? Do I have anyone in the public who'd like to pull an item for discussion from the consent calendar? All right, seeing none.
I'll move the consent calendar.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
The consent calendar passes. Next, to number four, the city manager's oral report, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmembers, first, since your last council meeting, we took two banner polls down on Magnolia, and we wanted to let the council know that we have the polls. And I've had some chats with the Larkspur Community Foundation about the costs involved and what we need to do. And then, we'll probably, some point later on, bring a general discussion item of ideas moving forward. We have had a few inquiries when we'll do that, so. No timetable yet, but we, at some point, will bring that back with some ideas. And then, wanted to give you my every-meeting city hall update. So, we are now in the nervous stage of whether your first meeting in April will occur in the council meeting or at Central Marin Police Authority. It's going to be tight, really close. We're expecting to finish over the next two, two-and-a-half weeks, in terms of the interior work, so we're hoping we'll have the council chamber available. The exterior work, they tell me they're going to be done at the last day of March. We'll see if that's really the case. If you've driven by city hall in the last day or two, it still looks like they might have a bit of a way to go. Now, that doesn't include the paint job. The painting will occur sometime in April or May, so that's a separate part of the process, but in terms of getting the stucco back on the exterior, we're working on that. We survived the most recent downpour of rain, and no significant issues around town. We had one sinkhole of modest size on Piedmont, but otherwise, though we had some things open up here or there, storm drains performed very well. We managed all our hotspots, so to speak, fairly well, and again, my thanks to Public Works, and particularly the maintenance guys are out there every day trying to make sure those things are going to be ready when they need to be ready, so. A significant accomplishment. And then, I wanted to let the council know that I have been in discussions with other folks at my level who are looking at the SMART station coming to Larkspur, and we're now being told that probably the earliest that construction will occur in Larkspur is the summer of 2017. That's the optimistic date at the moment. Just as they've done in San Rafael, SMART will initiate a process that will engage a council subcommittee at some point, probably in the fall, to discuss issues, and then that subcommittee will be able to report back to the council on what they're hearing. As I've mentioned to the council before, we don't have as many of the logistic concerns that they're dealing with in San Rafael, and part of what's taking its time is, it's taking much longer than everyone hoped to solve all the problems in San Rafael. As you can imagine, they're having a significant nexus in an area that's already challenged in terms of folks moving through the bottleneck, and now they're adding a train to the situation, so they're trying to get that all sorted out, and they're also dealing with the Anderson Drive Crossing issue that's received publicity in the past, so that's what's taking time. It's not anything related to Larkspur, it's resolving issues in San Rafael. Other than that, Madam Mayor, we are already opening our budget season on staff so that we can begin to have talks with you probably in May about the budget situation for the upcoming year. With that, turn back to you and the council.
Does anyone have questions?
I just have a comment. Before I forget, a number of people stopped me on the street the last couple of days and told me to tell our city manager what a great job he did writing a letter to the editor acknowledging the passing of Francis Gordon. I thought that was a very thoughtful thing to do and beautifully written, and a number of residents have told me to tell you that.
Thank you.
I agree. Anything else?
Just one question, partly just prompted by the fact that I've been getting phone calls by a member of the Corte Madera Town Council, raising questions about the process that we have been going through or not going through in terms of working with Corte Madera to deal with the traffic issues that would be in the vicinity of the Wind Cup project. And I just wondered if we could maybe get all of us to have an update on where those discussions were, because I was really kind of dismayed to hear the report that I heard from the town council regarding our engagement in that process, because I'm not sure that I agree with it.
We could certainly convene another meeting of that group if you'd like us to convene We have not, at a staff level, had a significant engagement with the Corte Madera staff since we worked jointly on the project that we submitted to do improvements on Warham that we're hoping still to find some grant money to implement, so we have not had any significant conversations since then.
Is that project going forward, to the best of our knowledge, with the funding?
The improvements on Warham?
Well, with the funding that we were seeking.
The initial application didn't receive the grant we were hoping, so we've put it in the pool for two other possible grant pots of money, and are sort of in standby now. This is the time of year when TAM is out, the Transportation Authority is out, trying to find monies for everybody, so we've been sort of waiting to hear reports back from TAM about what the opportunities are. So, we're shepherding that project, but I can't tell you that I feel confident at this time what source of money may materialize for it.
Well, maybe it's time to have that subcommittee meet, because we haven't had a set that subcommittee meet this year. And I think, you're still on that, Anne?
Yeah. I just, I raise it because I would encourage that as well, and to make sure that we're engaging with Corte Madera in a way that they feel comfortable that we, you know, that we're both partners in that discussion.
Okay. So, we can maybe come up with a time for that subcommittee between the groups to meet. Any other questions? All right, so we'll go to five councilmember reports and comments. Specifically, I think we'll start with Larry, if you'd like to give an update on the ad-hoc committee that we are on together, meaning about our fire discussion.
Okay. Give you a little bit of background, probably when Len Rifkind was mayor, that's when we had created at least a Larkspur side of the ad-hoc committee to look at fire consolidation. At that time, it was going to be the current mayor and the immediate past mayor and the city manager. Corte Madera has also their town manager and two appointees of their council, so, you know, fast forward to this year, it's currently Mayor Wei and myself, and we've met with Corte Madera several times, along with Jim Irving, the former chief of the Marin, Southern Marin Fire District. So, he was involved in the consolidation and creation of that fire district and has a lot of experience in that particular area. What our committee has done, after seeing some of his presentations and having some discussions between the two sides, is that we have now brought Chief, Police Chief Todd Cusimano from the Central Marin Police Authority into the discussions. In large part, it's because of his experience in public safety, as well as, you know, the formation of the current JPA by adding San and Selma most recently, a couple of years ago. So, you know, he's adding a lot to the discussion right now and, you know, helping to provide, you know, his recommendations in terms of structure. One of the first things he is recommending is that we appoint an interim chief as soon as possible, so staff will be, you know, looking at the best qualified candidates for that. After that, you know, the two managers will go back to Jim Irving, and Jim is going to be presenting the analysis that he's done on six or seven different options that we can take, and that will be presented to each of our respective councils at some point, hopefully in the near future. So, other than that, at this point, I understand he's also had meetings and had the same discussions with the two respective labor groups for both the town and the city in terms of the employees, so everybody is really caught up in at the same point right now, so we're just going to keep going down the process. We hope that this will be quick if things look good. It's been presented to us in our board or council retreats that, you know, don't expect this to have immediate savings in, say, the first year, but what we also need to realize is that if we don't go through the consolidation, that there are fire services that we have not been able to provide, and if we were to do those on our own, and add that to the equation, that it could actually cost us more anyway. So, we'll be looking at everything from what it'll cost us to do nothing, and about five or six options that are organizationally structured in different ways to show, you know, what our alternatives are, and those could be anything from a full consolidation between our two fire agencies to including, you know, our current arrangement, say, for example, having a battalion chief from San Rafael, or maybe having contractors be shared battalion chiefs, or we have things that are more shared at the command level, you know, in the stations, you know, things like that.
Still a lot to work out.
A lot to work out. Yeah.
Thank you.
If you'd like to add anything, if the city manager would like to add anything.
I think that was through. I think we're continuing the discussion process, and it'll go, Dan?
Just a question. Toward the end of your description, you mentioned looking at alternatives for consolidation, but prior to that, you stated that the first task would be to select an interim chief. For what entity would that chief be serving?
That chief would be serving both the town of Corte Madera and the city of Larkspur.
As a shared staff position?
Shared command.
Shared management position?
Management.
And then, the alternatives would look at a JPA?
Well, although, I mean, that's all still...
No, I know, I'm trying, he mentioned alternatives, I'm just trying to get an idea of the flavor.
Well, here's one, for example. We could end contracting out the chief, you know, in a shared services arrangement, or we could take it at the battalion chief level.
But I think, but I just want to make sure we're not getting ahead of ourselves, because we're not there yet, and I don't want to report out to a community that we've made all those, that those decisions are...
I understand.
Are exactly the direction we're going, because we're not really there yet.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
I think there'll be a lot more clarity after the next meeting, which is in April, of this subcommittee, so, and then eventually, we'll want to have a joint committee, a joint meeting of Camp Corte Madera and Larkspur to really go through, asking very specific questions. Look forward to that.
May I turn my, Madam Mayor?
Sure.
I'm concerned about the distribution of information consistent between the two councils. So, last night at the Corte Madera Council, it was clarified that both entities have agreed that Scott Shirts will serve as the joint chief of the two agencies in an interim capacity, so I want to make sure that's made clear to Larkspur Council and Larkspur community. How the future acting joint command staff looks is something that Chief Shirts will be working on, and there'll be more details to come.
That's why I wanted to be here. That's great. Sure.
To clarify, how was the selection made of the interim chief?
At the end of the day, Mr. Brackett and I made that selection, although I, we did have some discussions with Chief Cusimano, Chief Shirts, and the two battalion chiefs that are in Corte Madera. We also had some discussions at one point with the units about their feelings about what that would be like, because we know we're treading into unusual waters.
So, we should consider that announcement as having been made here tonight?
We're hoping to bring an MOU between the two agencies to the two councils as soon as possible to implement a joint command staff. So, until that MOU's in place, we don't have a legal mechanism to truly grant authority to Chief Shirts and to truly grant authority to battalion chiefs from the other agency serving over any of our staff, so we need to put that in place. So, right now, they're acting in an informal capacity, but we hope to bring that to you shortly.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Great, thank you. Anything else, Larry?
Nope.
Dan, would you, do you have anything?
Welcome aboard.
Since we're on this side of the table, are you recording?
No, thank you. We salute you.
Any reports?
We kind of knew that, but we weren't sure if it was ready for primetime yet.
Go ahead, Anne.
What'd you say, Mary?
Oh, no, we knew that, but we weren't sure if it was ready to be announced yet.
I sit on the Community Development Block Grant, Lower Ross Valley with Steve Kenzie and Carla Condon, and we gave out some funds to some public services, and I want to share them with you. We gave $5,400 to Family Law Legal Services, $4,100 to Marin Brain Injury Network, and $5,200 to Senior Access Scholarships. We're pleased about that. I also am the liaison to the Chamber of Commerce. We met yesterday, and Catherine Wei joined us. It was probably one of the most enthusiastic, organized meetings I've attended at the chambers. A lot of excitement is happening there. They are reinventing their website, which will be in place right after Easter, so that's good news, easy access to the website. They're also creating a Chamber of Commerce newsletter. They discuss new benefits for white people who want to join the chamber, discount at Staples, and marketing Constant Contract is another discount, and the Marriott is going to give 50% off of their meeting room usage. Along with, the Bonner Shopping Center is going to have a ribbon cutting, they're going to do a remodel, and the ribbon cutting, we're all invited to, is on April the 12th. I'll give you more information, the time and where. And then, we have a wine stroll happening on July the 16th from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. That is the Chamber of Commerce update. Thank you.
Okay, my turn?
Sure. I think I can hear, I think the microphones are...
Is that okay? I don't need that?
Yeah.
Just use the other one.
It's going to be more powerful.
Well, that's what we need. Thank you. I just wanted to report on two things. I think at the last city council meeting, I mentioned plans to attend a workshop with the California Public Utilities Commission, which was scheduled and was held on March 8th, Tuesday, March 8th. The focus of the workshop was on how the CPUC will move forward with both the investor-owned utilities, as well as community choice aggregation entities like MCE Clean Energy, of which I am this city's representative, and moving forward in how the, what's called the power charge indifference adjustment fee, or PCIA assessment, is implemented going forward into the future. I think in past city council meetings, I may have mentioned that there was a CPUC determination, I believe it was in December, to significantly increase the PCIA fee that is assessed to ratepayers that are within MCE's customer service area. Again, the PCIA is a charge that is approved by the CPUC theoretically to essentially provide fairness and equity to PG&E's existing customers in light of the fact that PG&E's costs go up because of a reduced load when customers sign up for MCE Clean Energy and other CCIA's and take that load away from PG&E. So, it's theoretically intended to be a kind of a balancing of the equities to preserve the integrity of how rates are assessed against PG&E's customers. In practice, that's not really the way it happens, in fact, quite the opposite. It is resulting in an increase in the overall costs that customers of MCE Clean Energy, including many people in Larkspur. Yeah, me too, because I'm a deep green customer. So, it's a very significant element of the overall costs to energy customers within our service area. At the CPUC hearing in December, the commission approved what is essentially a 95% increase in the amount of the PCIA exit fee charge, which is very difficult for many of us who have an involvement with MCE to really understand. And there are a lot of details that have come out of it, and I know Larry has had a number of questions that have come out of that process, and I have a lot of questions that have come out of that process, but one good thing that came out of that process was the commission's willingness to conduct a workshop that they did on March 8th to take a look at some kind of more fundamental issues associated with the way the PCIA charge is developed and implemented. I was very happy to be able to attend that workshop and participate as one of the members of the presentation group for MCE to the commission. Most of the workshop was dominated by presentations by the CPUC staff and by PG&E staff. I was only able to attend the workshop during the morning session, but I did have an opportunity to talk for a couple of minutes and to make a point, expressing my own personal view, that the PCIA charge is inherently unfair and inappropriate and needs to be revisited in its entirety, that it is not really a mechanism designed or intended to protect PG&E's ratepayers. It's a device that's really designed and intended to protect PG&E's investors. So, that was the focus of my presentation at that workshop. I'll be going to a regular board session of the MCE board tomorrow night, and I'm sure this will be a topic of great interest and conversation during the course of that, and maybe get some direction about future actions, either regulatory or legislative that MCE may take on that basis. So, that was interesting. The other thing I just wanted to mention briefly is that last night, March 15th, there was a county workshop, potentially the last county workshop, on the Sir Francis Drake rehabilitation project. This is a project that has been in the works with the county for at least a year now, to primarily focus on rehabilitating the road services of Sir Francis Drake, and from our perspective, with a particular focus on the stretch of Sir Francis Drake between Ross and Highway 101. There are a variety of other elements that have been proposed as part of the rehabilitation project that go beyond just road rehabilitation, because the county has found that road rehabilitation is going to cost less than the amount of money that they have actually allocated for the project, in fact, about half what they thought it was going to cost. So, the total amount of money that's been allocated for the project is approximately $13 million and change. Rehabilitation of the road services will cost about half of that, which creates opportunities from the county's perspective to pursue additional projects going above and beyond road rehabilitation. So, a lot of what has happened over the course of the last year in a series of workshops that the county has conducted is to identify what those potential project elements might be and to refine them. I was happy to see at the workshop last night that, in fact, the county has been listening to some extent to input provided by the public regarding those additional project elements. Right now, the way the project looks like it will be shaping up, most significantly from the perspective of people who live in our community, is the elimination of bike lanes along Sir Francis Drake and the incorporation of an additional traffic lane going from west to east, essentially in front of Bonner and the Greenbray development. The idea is that that will have a material impact on traffic congestion in that corridor, which historically has been extremely congested. It's one of the worst traffic corridors in the county. There was a vigorous discussion at the workshop regarding a variety of different elements that have been suggested by the county as part of the overall project. We had some good discussion about the potential application of real-time computer technologies to manage traffic signaling along Sir Francis Drake. That's something that I'm enthusiastic about. There is a question about whether there is money available to do that, and I think there's a debate that we will be seeing over the coming weeks about that issue. There are also questions that were raised about the application of the funds for the project. For those of you who are familiar with the background, the funding for the project is based upon so-called Measure A, which was a measure that was passed by residents in the Ross Valley, I think 10 years ago, which is, in the views of some of us, entirely designed to address traffic congestion issues. Not everyone has the same perspective, but there was a good discussion about how those funds are being used, and again, I think over coming weeks, we'll see that discussion continue and maybe even elevate a little bit. So, it was a good meeting. You were there, Catherine?
Do you know if they have another date set for, I didn't see any other date.
I don't, I think this is actually the last designated workshop, so the plan, as I understood it from one of the PowerPoint presentations, or one of the PowerPoint slides in their presentation, was that they are now going to move into design and the initiation of an environmental review process...
Yes, that's right.
...under SEQA, which would refine the project proposals, and there are a lot of different components to it. I've just focused on the ones that I think are most important to us, but they will then initiate construction, I think, in 2000, maybe as early as 2017. And this will be a significant project and will result in from some significant disruption, both to the flow of traffic on Sir Francis Drake while construction activities are ongoing, as well as to access to that thoroughfare from ancillary roadways.
Okay. Well, I attended that meeting also. It was very well attended by probably about 150 people. The other component to that was that Marin Municipal Water District redoing their entire trunk line through Sir Francis Drake, which will also make this project even more complex. So, I have just a short report, and that is that the Twin Cities Disaster Preparedness Committee is now under the direction of Theo Manis, doing our hiring for the NRG coordinator that Corte Madera and Larkspur councils both agreed to, and we now have a date for interviews, and I believe we have eight, or maybe nine applicants. So, we should have some final information about that in the next couple of weeks. So, thank you, Lieutenant. Anything else? Great. Now, it's time for public comment. We'll take comment from anyone in the public on matters that are not on the agenda, of which we have jurisdiction. Seeing none, we'll move on to number seven, our public hearing. So, 7.1 is to introduce and waive the first reading of ordinance number 1011, time limits on building permits. And I think we have a staff report by Kristin.
I've been relegated to the little podium here.
Great podium.
Thank you, Mayor Wei. Good evening, everyone. In recent years, the city has repeatedly received complaints from Larkspur residents regarding the construction activities that are ongoing in their neighborhoods due to noise and just length of time that projects have persisted. Due to this, staff conducted a survey of Marin agencies with respect to days and hours that construction activity was allowed and any time limits imposed to ensure a timely completion of an issued permit. The California Building Code unfortunately does not provide specific limitations of A permit can sort of be continued indefinitely if they get an inspection every six months. On November 18th of 2014, staff presented these findings regarding the other cities to the Planning Commission for Review and a recommendation of possible code amendments. On January 20th, the council was presented with proposed amendments to Chapter 9.54, modifying the permitted days and hours of operation for construction. These amendments were subsequently passed and adopted by ordinance 1010 last February. The draft ordinance provided to you in your packet tonight now proposes amending Section 1508-020, Amendments to the California Building Code. These amendments would codify the limits for building permits and create an end date for construction projects. In addition, the building official took the opportunity to modify a few code sections and clean up a few things. It should be noted that after review of the time limits and enforcement actions employed by other cities, staff and the building official put together what they, we believe is a blended approach, intended to incentivize getting the job done, but not result in aggressive penalties and fines. There was some concern that imposing large penalties and fines similar to towns like Ross and Belvedere would create an administrative burden and also could financially destabilize a project that's struggling. Therefore, the proposed amendments are as follows. Chapter 1, Section 105.5. I'm going to walk through them very briefly in the order provided in the ordinance. Subsections 1 through 3 codifies when an issued permit expires if work is never started. It also provides provisions for requesting an extension of time on that permit or the reactivation of an expired permit. Subsection 4A provides time limits of one year, 18 months, and two years for completion of work, based upon valuation of the proposed work, the project itself. Subsection 4B addresses requests for an extension of time to exceed the set time limit of subsection 4A. This request would be accompanied by a fee equal to one-half of the original building permit fee, so there's sort of your de facto fine. Subsection 4C provides procedures and findings for granting or denying the requested extension. And number 4D provides criteria for determining project completion. A few other minor amendments. Section 109.6 refunds. This section clarifies the process and criteria for refunding plan check and building permit fees when a permit's reviewed but never pulled or acted upon. Any staff time that is expended would first be deducted before we consider the refund. Chapter 1, Section 116, Unsafe Structures and Equipment. This section corrects the Larksburg Municipal Code reference for the appeals procedures. Just as a little addition, if an applicant fails to comply with the time limits proposed in the ordinance, we would then rely on existing sections of our code, declare the project a nuisance, and seek corrective action under Chapter 9.24 Code Enforcement. So if the council finds that these amendments are appropriate as drafted, we recommend you introduce and waive the first reading of the ordinance, find the amendments to Section 1508-020 are exempt from SEQA, and direct staff to bring the ordinance back for a second reading and adoption at the next regular council meeting.
Thank you. We'll begin with, any questions of Kristin from the council?
I just want to give a compliment to you and Neil.
Sure.
Much easier to understand.
Oh, good.
I really appreciate it. It's easy to follow.
That's great.
It's a lot of hard work. Thank you.
Yes, go ahead, Mary.
Just to clarify what's being proposed, at least, you know, in the staff report, when you say incentivized, then you're saying that we're not going to charge them a fee upfront, but if they don't meet the deadline, then they're going to have to pay the fee, which is like giving it away and then, rather than charging a fine for it?
Right. If they find they can't meet their deadline, that's a little administrative thing. We'll have to work out whether we're going to send them a notice that they're running out of time or not. Those are just details we'll work on. Then they would have to apply for the extension, and to apply for the extension, they have to pay 50% of their permit fees over again, and that extension can be either approved or denied. If they continue to fail to comply with time limits, then we would declare it a nuisance and begin code enforcement action.
So what I saw here was the possibility of it going out as far as 18 months?
I think 12 months was the limit.
There's the original, there's the original project, and then two six-month extensions. Is that correct?
Right.
Yeah.
No, I don't think, I think it, he just says that he can extend it up to 12 months, not to exceed 12 months, I believe is what it says.
I think it says an additional six months after each inspection performed.
Oh, that's just regular building permit inspections. Every time somebody acts, does work on their property and requests an inspection, that permit is immediately renewed for another six months. That's standard building permit requirements.
Yes.
There's nothing to do with this ordinance.
So end to end, we're potentially looking at 18 months?
Well, there are time limits set once they're issued, regardless of how many inspections they ask for. Depending on the value of the work, they will be done in 12 months, 18 months, or 24 months, period. If they can't meet that deadline, then they have to apply for the extension of time.
Okay. I guess one of the things that's fresh in our minds right now is obviously a recent project that came before us, and, you know, I guess, does this structure take care of that? I mean, you mentioned that, you know, in part, you don't want to impose large fines for a project that's struggling, but I could argue, you know, somebody's had to manage big projects, that it's struggling because it's mismanaged.
Mm-hmm.
And so, this should be a hobby.
They will eventually, if a project isn't capable of, of meeting their deadlines and then the extensions are exhausted and they still haven't put it together, we would begin the code enforcement process, which does allow us to impose fairly substantial fines. I believe the project in question paid approximately $25,000?
Probably over its lifetime, it was 10 in, in base...
Yeah.
...fines, and then quite a substantial number of fees were required of it that were allowed because they had failed to meet provisions. If I might offer a comment, I think the staff worked very hard to balance the, what they see across the entire city as an issue and a need versus the two outliers we've experienced in the last five years. And so I think to answer your question, if the particular case that we dealt with at the most recent hearing happened, I don't know the financial means of the people who own that property and were building it. If they did have the financial means and wherewithal, maybe they would just have kept rolling with the project. But again, I think that's the outlier, and you've over, if you overprogram to that outlier, you're going to hurt a lot of well-intended people who are, who are going to need this code partly to nudge themselves and partly to help them manage their contractors, so...
With this new wording, what would have happened if we had this in place for that appeal?
Well, during the lifetime of their project, they would have hit these deadlines several times, and so they would have faced a lot of costs to us that they didn't face otherwise. So, but I think going to Councilmember Chu's point, there may be people who have the financial means to absorb those costs as part of their project, but those are the same people that are going to be able to absorb the costs no matter what direction we, we take dealing with them, so...
Just, just one...
Sure.
Just, just one.
What's that? I'm sorry. Are you done? Okay.
And just to clarify, the, the mechanism that's envisioned in this for the issuance of extensions is substantially discretionary on the part of the city, so it's not, it's not automatic. So if there's a perception that an applicant who is seeking an extension is going to have difficulties even complying with that extension, presumably there's discretion within the city to deny the extension.
That, that's my understanding. I agree, and, and, you know, that would be something I would essentially delegate to Mr. Toft, and he'd be making those decisions or one of his staff.
Yeah, so that's an extra layer of protection for the city to make sure that projects are moving forward in the time of fashion.
I agree, and I think it, in this process, that discretion on the part of the staff and its hammer is clear to the project applicant as they're going through the process, which is one of the challenges we are facing with our current code, is it's not always as clear, both for staff and the applicant.
Yeah, that's, that's what I understood was a, a big part of this, so I'm glad to say.
Much better. Kristin, how are you finding that we communicate this with contractors and applicants, these two, this type of process? Does it come on a fact sheet when people pick up a permit?
Mm-hmm. They will be advised when they're pulling permits, they'll be given something in writing. Then we're also going to do a public outreach.
Okay.
I believe he wants to do it through text push. All the people who've signed up for information from our website will, will reach out to them, to all the contractors we have business licenses for that we can send to. And, you know, it'll just be an, an organized and hopefully thorough approach.
Good. Any question, other, further questions?
Yeah. Just, just one more quick one, maybe, I don't know if it's Kristin or Dan, but if we're going to create incentives for people to not pay anything until they get to the point they need to extend, what's, what's our revenue loss? Because normally they would end up paying the fees.
I'm, I'm not sure.
No, they're, they're still paying the upfront fee, Larry. They then have to pay a subsequent fee to get the extension, and those subsequent fees are sizable. That's the...
That's the incentive.
So there is still the initial fee to address our costs for the, for the project.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Seeing no other questions by council, then I'll open it up to the public. Any questions from the public? We do have public here. Seeing none, then I'll return it to council for any further discussion.
I'm ready to make a motion, Madam Mayor.
All right.
I'll move that we introduce and waive the first reading of ordinance 1011, amending Section 15.08.020 of the California Building Code, and include that we make the finding that the amendments to Section 15.08.020 are exempt from SEQA pursuant to Section 1506.1, which is Section B, Number 3 of the guidelines, and that we bring the direct staff to bring the ordinance back for a second reading and adoption at the next regularly scheduled city council meeting.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? No? All right, that passes. Thank you, Kristin, for your presentation. It was very thorough. Onto number eight, which is business item, and we have no business items on the agenda tonight. So I would just like to take a moment before we adjourn to adjourn this meeting in honor of Frances Gordon, our really wonderful, dear librarian who, and friend, who recently passed away. And for those of you who are watching this online or later, there is a public memorial service for her on Sunday, April 10th, at the Cordera and Larksburg Community Center on Tamil Pious Drive, and you'll find out more information about that. But I would really like to encourage anyone who may be watching this tape later to please attend and share with the rest of the members of the community our loss of Frances. So thank you.
Can I amend your motion?
Sure.
At the last meeting, we had realized that Councilmember Hilmer was not able to attend because of the passing of his mother, and we were going to adjourn in her memory. Her name is Catherine, and we decided we were going to wait until Councilmember Hilmer came back so that we could do that in his presence.
Thank you.
So I would like to add Ms. Catherine Hilmer to our adjournment as well.
So done.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. I'll take a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Great. Meeting is adjourned at 8:13.